So is the consultant going to be here too? Or is this just us?
Hi Ken. Good to see you.
Again.
Ellen should be here and Lee is going to join us virtually.
How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
How are you?
Be careful you don't fall, you know, people are falling off that back there.
Yay, Al's here.
I am Carol Harvey. Good to meet you and I'm glad you're here.
Good. Snow is trying to come.
Looks like it's faster.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of sucker holes up there.
I don't think we're gonna get you. Fast as fuck. See you too.
I guess I just missed that.
I got the next four weeks.
There's my favorite.
So probably won't be here on the 28th.
Worked on that.
Oh yeah?
We have a big case.
Were you the planner then or?
Kip Peterson used to be the planner for the committee.
I got people. Working on all over the country and then I got main place, well, my main responsibility is Dominican. I've got a plant down there that's got 1,200 employees.
She's been there for a long time.
So all our letter jackets and sportswear.
It's made there.
It's all made.
Yeah, he was a consultant. Consulting grant.
County door. Four months to get a garage door. Four months to order a grunge.
Good read.
And they're out of springs, he doesn't know if that's a spring, that broke the spring in the garage door, that guy's car is out.
Yeah.
Wow. We're getting close.
You know, we make like five million caps and gowns a year and we're the. We kind of own the market almost, there's a few competitors, but we got most of it for all caps and gowns and a four month letter jackets and everything. So we get, you know. Our materials from all over the world.
Is my audio okay?
Your audio is great.
Last year it cost $5,000. Regardless of what it costs to bring it from overseas, you know what it costs to bring a container now? Thirty-five thousand.
I heard that on.
One container.
Is that fuel?
It's everything, it's it's fuel, it's shipping, it's what the market will bear because shortages and.
Wow. So a bigger, bigger outfit like Amazon can afford it, but smaller companies can't.
The price increases are just starting. It's gonna get worse.
I'm good.
I had one in the car for nothing.
Carol Harvey, Lee, this is Lee Brown, welcome.
Thank you, Lee, good to meet you even this way.
Sort of meeting, next, next meeting.
You bet.
We can start, we have everybody here.
I was on the planning commission for four years and then counsel for 7.35. No, I would like to say I've read a couple of the drafts of the comp plan and I, I think it's a great job this year, you guys put a lot of effort into it and it shows.
Here this week.
We were getting so thin on people that we couldn't refuse ourselves or wouldn't have a warrant.
Oh, that's right, still got it on.
Works. Anyhow, envision Woodland Park 2030 final review and edits, we'll just vote on that and move on? No. That was good.
So I can give you all an update. Of where we are, the. Red lines that were handed out October 8th, you received a copy of red lines and blue lines. The red lines were from the city planning commission's discussions, all the workshops that we had over four meetings, about 10, 11 hours worth of grind. Did a great job and then the blue were comments from our editor who was Charlie Schrader. And so Charlie did pick up the October 8th red line, blue line, he has gone through it again. And has overall said the chapters are in good shape. But he does have a few pencil marks in here that are all tagged here on this, this sheet. And some recommendations to continue to kind of streamline a few of the actions that are fairly lengthy with a lot of examples that are really not necessary. He's also suggesting that the drainage map be removed, so wanted to get your input on that. It really, the, the size of these maps are so small. It's gonna be in the transportation chapter. Transportation. And, and really it, it shows the waterways.
That's 93.
Um, yeah. So it really just shows the drainage ways, the creeks, which are all on the Teller County assessor's map, the flood plains. And then the dots represent various detention ponds in the community. The city has a very good drainage map that actually Dave Burgess put together about two years ago. That shows the detention ponds on an aerial, so it's much more relevant than this grayscale type map. So wanted to get your thoughts, if you feel it's, it's valuable, we can keep it.
So is the recommendation that this is just.
Yes. And also this chapter refers to the drainage stormwater master plan, that master plan is beautiful. It has every section of town with an aerial, it counted every single culvert, we have like 1,400 culverts in Woodland Park. You know, twice as many people. So it's, so we have supporting documents that really tell the story.
Kind of the old rule of thumb is you never want to have the same thing in multiple places because then they just contradict, so if we got a better one somewhere else, I think that's.
Fair set and I do really like the roadmap that's in this chapter. We had just through PPACG improved on the next page on 91. Page 91. We just adopted our roadway functional roadway classifications. And so this map is very informative because these are the roads that we can apply for. State and federal funding for and get matches, we would, the city would match, but this is very important to have these roadway classifications updated.
Sally, all I would say about the drainage map says there are actions in that chapter for drainage, does this? Help illustrate those at all, if not, I would say get rid of it.
I don't think they do.
What, what was Charlie's rationale for getting rid of it?
He just felt it wasn't necessary and not all that informative.
If we left it in there and put a statement under for bar comprehensive, whatever, and see Sally applying cushions to put more detail or something like that. As Lee shows, we've got it, I mean, we've got it listed.
It's listed already in the document.
To her to see the.
Yeah, I'd hate to have somebody look at that and think, okay, that's what it is and, and they think that's the only source.
We could put some detail.
We got the relevant documents at the end of the chapter.
Exactly, yeah, is it something that would be changed very often?
Because if it's the master plan, no, isn't, and the drainage map is just updated as new detention ponds come online.
Okay.
New developments.
Yes, new development with detention ponds. That's both residential and commercial. So it sounds like you're in agreement, we could do that, he also noted that there were several pages that did not use the two column format.
Yeah.
So we'll get that fixed. And shorten a few actions in the arts and heritage and one action in sustainability. He did really like the sustainability section, there was an additional paragraph that helped inform that section. And also we worked on the water and wastewater description to make it a little bit more readable. And he liked that. So I would ask, does anyone else have any other tweaks, I will be handing these off to Logan Simpson to get our final, final, final document done. And ready for all of you to adopt at the next meeting on October 28th.
Sally, I have a couple of typos here and there and little grammatical things which I, I will forward to you, it's not worth discussing as a group, but if someone chooses to make the corrections, they can choose to do this, it's readable without it.
Perfect.
So are you saying that the next version will have the two column formatting that Charlie recommended?
Yes.
And Charlie was given all your comments, he already has gone through that.
Yeah, I couldn't think of a better editor, I, I, just because I have looked at it a couple of times and I mentioned this one to, to Sally on page two under what's new and it. Spells out what's changed since the last one, there was a sentence in there that I think must have got cut and pasted from something that wasn't relevant to the comp plan where it goes. The documents and update to the 2010 comprehensive plan and as part of the process, subcommittees comprised of local residents and regional program directors. And I did, I had no clue what that might be and I, I suggested stakeholders instead. When I think of re- regional program directors, I think of government contracts and it, it must have been transposed from something else unless someone here knows what the rationale was behind that.
I think it meant something like, like, like Don for the Teller County.
Yeah, what would, Lee, what would you think of stakeholders instead?
Stakeholders would cover that and more so that, I don't have an objection.
And then the only other thing that, that kind of jumped out at me were the two maps that illustrated what it would look like downtown, or they're not maps, they're graphics, if we had a bypass. Are they necessary or is that just to help people visualize what it, what a pleasant place we would have if we got rid of 24 through town?
It would be a lot quieter.
They take up a lot of space is all I was thinking of, I didn't know if they were necessary or not, but I, I wasn't here when they were decided on downtown character and design on 40 and 41. And then the one, the, the one that precedes that.
The bypass is a big part though of the.
Yeah.
Hopefully the future.
It definitely is, I mean, I was on the transportation subcommittee for a little while and that was my goal or what I professed is what I thought was the most important objective, but I, I just don't know what these big old pictures provide.
I, I would say let's keep them in.
I think it's just attractive.
Yeah.
They are nice dogs.
It fits with the words, the vision.
The most important thing they have done is the icons for the older people have changed.
On the population chart.
Population chart.
But. But just to go back to those graphics for a moment, Christie Bruce did have those at the Fourth of July booth and she said the public was just enamored by them. So it's, it is a visual for, you know, our residents that it gets their creative juices going.
Well, that's my 12 cents worth.
And it could sort of look like that even without the reliever route.
We hope.
Maybe.
No.
Yeah, somebody closes that highway 24 in Cascade, it might.
I don't like the name reliever route, it sounds like you're in a bathroom. Just doesn't sound right.
Who the artist was, but it looks good.
I also identified that there were about six or seven various timeframes at the end of each of the, some of the actions. And about seven actions do not have that time, so I made a list and I can just give that to you, the pretty straightforward again, like Lee said, my comments were just to make it consistent with the other ones. Except I do have a very important change and I like to have the. Plan commission discuss, go to page 17.
Page 17.
Yes, please.
You don't like the picture of the old gun?
Well, I think. We changed it, but I think we have to put quotation marks underneath it and say Ellen. Just kidding.
I'd love that.
I'm gonna give you this right now before I forget.
You have to walk your dog if you're between 65 and 74. Eighty-five plus you get read.
Yeah. The dog walks you. Yeah. Dog pulls you.
You have any other comments for the final, final, final draft?
I like the graphics though.
The photographs and.
Much better, much better.
And we cut out so much fluff from the 2010 plan.
But they're brighter, they snap out.
Easy to read.
I didn't know we were that good.
That's good.
So moving forward, I am drafting the joint resolution 882 is what it will be. And that will be on your agenda for October 28th. The planning commission adopts and then you will make a recommendation to the city council to endorse. So that joint resolution will be in the front of this document with the chairman's signatures. And yeah, I think council seems to be pretty pleased as well.
How many council members were actively involved?
They, they were all actively involved in one subcommittee or another.
Should be no. No pushback.
Don't think so.
No, no. Where, I think they're all on board.
Do we have anything else on that agenda?
We do, we have a small subdivision.
Do you have priority, where you put that in order or? What, what, what's best to come first?
I, I think I put the subdivision first.
Get that out of the way.
Yes. It's a small subdivision, in fact, it's associated with the flood hazard permit that you're seeing tonight.
Is that the three lot to two lot thing?
Three lot, two, two lots, one tract, so we'll go over that when we do the flood hazard development permit. And technically that subdivision could have been an exemption plan, but because there's a dedication of the Fountain Creek to the city, I wanted for planning commission and city council to acknowledge that and make the decision.
So I planned, was ready for tonight.
It, the plat?
The plat was ready for tonight.
Yeah, they turned in the flood hazard permit before the plat was ready. Okay, so with that, I did want to give you all an update on the code revisions, which our city attorney, myself, have had now three meetings with our consultants. The first meeting was pretty much to kind of go over how the unified development code will be synchronized together. And then Holden with, from Logan Simpson, he has been working on the use table. So the matrix in title 18 with all the uses and whether it's permitted or conditional uses or permitted conditionally are all listed. And he has been updating that use table and I just got the updates today, so I will send those out to all of you to take a look at. There are some new items that we've added, for example, brew pubs, we didn't have a brew pub category, we slotted them under bars and lounges, but it's helpful to distinguish some of those uses. So we, I will get those out to you this week and we can discuss them later in, in a work session in the future. So the goal is to go through all the sections, draft the unified development code by the end of the year. And then for adoption, that will take place in 2022. But even discussing, for example, the special use permit section, it is exactly the same as a conditional use. Same criteria, same application process, publication notices, except that the special use area has about, not quite a dozen, maybe eight unique uses listed. That are required to have a special use and they are things like airports and hospitals and colleges and. Recycling centers, in talking with Logan Simpson, those should be all listed in our use table, just like every other use. And then apply conditional uses or permitted uses wherever those unique uses should go and we can eliminate the whole special use.
And then it will come to us.
Yeah, and then they can be conditional uses, so that's an example of how we're trying to streamline the code and make it more user friendly. The next step is to work on definitions, because you know, you can have all this list of uses, but if you don't have a really good definition. Then you're sometimes scratching your head, what does it really mean? So you want to take out any arbitrary kinds of terminology and make sure that the definitions are, are well, well defined. Is understandable terms.
And they're going to provide recommendations?
They are, yes. So we're really getting a great service from Logan Simpson and we'll have a good product.
Any questions, Lee?
Another question, the, the whole subject, just be aware, it makes me very nervous that what you end up with next spring has the same effectiveness as what we had, is what we had this year. So we need lots of time to think about it and really read through it and see, we'll still probably have misses, I, I'd be interested in what they have for savings language or something, when something was missed, how does it, how does it picked up? And all of a sudden somebody puts a, a rendering plant downtown because we left out a comma somewhere. So it, it makes me nervous, but I understand the, I understand the, and I, the objective and I laud the objective.
The other thing we are doing is adding specific uses that are prohibited in Woodland Park, for example, junk yards are prohibited. Or we put outdoor RV storage, remember, we went through contemplating that and got quite a bit of pushback. So that to me is going to really help because sometimes people will say, well, I don't see it in the code that it's prohibited. So I guess we can do it if you can find a similar slot or something that is close to it. So I think that's gonna be very helpful is having the list very specifically of what is prohibited.
Oh, we'll include rendering plants.
It will, yes.
I'm not sure there's a great demand for a rendering plant downtown, but I think you, I hope you understood the point, I was, we need to be, we need to be watchful about.
Right, right. So some things are, are very specific, I'm thinking of medical marijuana or recreational marijuana or grow facilities, those are very specifically prohibited in title 18. So of course they'll stay, that will stay.
And they're also reviewing 16 and 17?
Yes, so title 17 is the subdivision regulations, those will be integrated into the unified code. And then title 16 is the mobile home park code, which is so unusual that that would have its own chapter, it's part of the zoning regulations, it's part of the matrix and the table of uses. So it will have its own chapter, not its own title any longer.
How long, how much longer is their contract, Logan Simpson?
Um, it's through the end of the year.
Okay.
So it's nice having the city attorney Nina Williams involved in the code review, because she will be able to carry it forward.
So I noticed on the time schedule, we talked about design guidelines, recommendations, and that's one of the topics listed under. For phase two and I would say that we have very good design guidelines in place, so I hope it's not a complete overhaul.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear you say that because that was the advice I gave them, our design guidelines are actually fairly general, but they're. Specific enough that the planner can negotiate with the builder and, or the architect and that seems to have worked really well. So yeah, we don't need to tweak design guidelines.
That's good.
Very much at all.
Because I've always thought they were worded so very carefully and it gives you, you a staff great direction. And it gives you, you a staff great direction on how to review a project and negotiate with the developer. Good. The other thing, those two that they're going to tackle, short term rentals.
All they're going to do is give us suggested examples.
Okay.
For short term rents.
It's an easy way out.
Yeah. So it's not recommending that this specific code be integrated. But here's an option if you're interested.
Did the council want to discuss it, the non owner occupied short term rentals? Or was that even discussed? A meeting?
It was not discussed at a meeting. And it's, all we've heard is that they want to have a conversation, but now they're deep into budget. And number of other things going on. So I think that that will.
Will they, I would hope that they would also recommend definitions for the different types of short terms.
Yes. Yeah, that will all be part of it in terms of the examples in other communities.
And Ellen brings up a good point about city council because they were so adamant about that thirty day limit. And when you talk about short term, the industry standard is thirty days.
It is.
What's the thirty day limit?
When you define a short term, anything less than thirty days is short term. Thirty days or more.
It's long term.
It's long term. That's where you draw the line and there's information saying that that's a good number. It's nothing pulled out of the air.
And it's consistent with the building code. Building code is lodging and building standards are for thirty days or less. But if it's long term, then a different set of building standards kick in.
Are we, are we currently taxing between short term rentals and hotels, for example? Significantly different or the same?
No, they're the same in terms of the sales tax and the lodging tax. Well, we have a very good software product that was implemented over a year ago. And they do, this software company, it's called Lodging Revs, Lodging Revenues. And so they scour the internet and pick out advertisers. And then we'll send these advertisers notices of compliance. And they get them in all registered and they have to register online. And our finance department tracks the registrations, the licensing, as well as the remittance of their lodging tax and sales tax. What is taxed differently is property tax. So a hotel or a motel is typically in a commercial zone. And they get the commercial rate for property tax. Whereas if you're leasing short term, your home, the tax assessor still taxes at the residential rate. And that's the state, state law.
How, how have people complied when notified? I would imagine there's some that just didn't even know they had to do that. But when notified, how's compliance gone?
It seems like Jennifer gets good compliance.
Compliance with what?
Uh, when they're notified, hey, we found your ad on the internet for a short term rental, you know, with sales tax now. So they're getting a letter of, you know, explaining what they have not done and giving them the opportunity to to make it right.
I've got one over in B and B. It just, VRBO just takes care of it.
Well, I think that's how some of them have been found is through VRBO.
I think you can probably opt in and I think opt out, you can, but we, I just do mine just now. We collect it and pay the city a BB.
Does the city pay for that service?
We do. It's twelve hundred dollars a month.
So we gotta get people to comply, get their application in, pay the fee, make up the difference. Plus your time.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons in, over in BV why it's old Chaffee County was so attractive to, for short term rentals. Because the tax rate was way less for short term rentals than hotel lodging. It made the cash flow calculation pretty easy to do. But there, that's one of the things they're changing. They've done a lot of changes in the last couple of months. Some were the right changes and some they didn't quite know what they were doing, but.
So did they implement new regulations?
Just did, yeah, about a couple of weeks ago.
Do you recall some of the standards?
Yeah, so what they did is they've capped it at, I believe it's six percent of all homes. So this is the town of BV. So, so light has got something different. The county's just on lockdown right now because they don't know what they're doing different. BV just came out with. So they're, they've got six percent for non-Chaffee County residents. So you can't have, you know, out of staters or, you know, and anybody who's got one's grandfather being of course, which that, that makes sense. And then so basically the cap to six percent is basically what they're at. So they're basically saying, I think they're going to allow like nine more licenses or something like that to people outside Chaffee County. And then inside, if you're a Chaffee County resident, it's three percent of the res- residents can be short term rental of Chaffee County. Right, so it's a goof for math population. But basically, if you're a Chaffee County resident, then you can have, the odds that you get a license are better. And then if it's your own, if it's your primary residence, those are unlimited. And if you've got a oh, what's the, like, if you've got an apartment above your garage, what's that? ADU, those, they're actually encouraging those for your primary residences. Those are unlimited as well. So, and then they've got spots like the South Main area, that new South Main where the Surf Hotel is and they're building those homes. That zone is, doesn't fall in with that. So if you buy in that zone, that's still unlimited short term rentals. Which it should be because those are basically all vacation properties. So, so they've done a few things good. I think there's a few things they could have done better. But they still got the tax rate at, you know, the hotel tax rate is significantly higher than the short term tax rate, which I like it personally.
Property tax.
But it's, property tax is the same. The lodging tax, the lodging tax is way less for short term rental, which.
That's interesting, though. I'd never thought about limiting the number of licenses. I don't think it's something that we've considered here, is it?
We haven't.
Well, and part of what's, because I'm actually on a lot over there and I'm going to build some more. But what's happening is, is a few years ago, the, the, what you could get for short term rentals versus what it costs you to buy a property, it was ridiculously profitable. Now it's getting to the point where the prices of homes over there, it's, the cash flow is, it's like, I can pay off my mortgage, but I'm not going to make any money. All I'm going to make is, so you're seeing them slowing down just naturally because the cash flow doesn't work anymore. And so I, I think
Limiting.
Yeah, it's gonna, it kind of fixes itself, you know? And I think that's what's going to happen with us, to be honest with you, is, is we don't cost as much as over there. But you can't charge as much here as you can over, you don't get as much per night here as you would over there. So I, I, rough math, we're getting to the point that anybody who really does math is going to be like, unless you're already a property owner and you've already got it paid for. But you just buy one and take that house away from a, somebody who's going to be their primary residence to make it a short term rental. You, we're getting closer already to the cash flow point where not many people are going to do that anymore, I don't think. It's, it's getting, it used to be, it was a no brainer. And you just do the math and it's like, shoot. Yeah, pays my mortgage and puts thirty thousand dollars a year in the bank. Why would I not do this? You know, that's the way it was over in BV. That's why there's so many over in Chaffee County. Because you, you do five minutes of calculator work and you're like, whoa, I need to buy a lot.
I'm just surprised there's a market that large that supports this many short term rentals in communities.
Well, and the, and the thing, the thing is, is it's, it's kind of been a double edged sword over in BV too. Is they, they will freely admit that if they didn't have the short term rentals they had, that town would not have grown. It would not have nearly as many restaurants. It would have nearly as many businesses. So, so from the growth standpoint, it's been great. I mean, it brings a lot of money. They've got a budget surplus again. Just because they bring in so much tax revenue and so much tourism revenue because of it. They're all, really, the only complaint is, is the low income houses that, you know, people, families who were blue collar families could afford to buy. They're few and far between anymore because they were the easy ones to buy up, stick thirty thousand dollars in it refurbished. And then make it really look nice and make it a short term rental and get two hundred fifty dollars a night. So that, that was, that's really their only problem. If, I think they should have tackled the problem differently. I think they should subsidize, take the income they're getting off short term rentals, subsidize neighborhoods that don't allow short term rentals. And there is one over there. It's called the Farm, that they don't allow short term rents in that, that. And because, because of that, the prices in that neighborhood are not nearly as expensive as the rest of the parts of town. Because people can't just buy and make money off of them. So they had the, the price in that, that little neighborhood hasn't gone through the roof. And oh, by the way, it's a really nice neighborhood. It's not a crappy neighborhood. The stuff is all new in there. So if you just plan accordingly, you can plan your way to get both. You can get the tourism and the revenue dollars and the money coming into your town, but you can still protect your, your places for the, for the blue collar kind of type families to live and have income by planning and zoning accordingly. And that's, that's, I think, the mistake they're making is they're not addressing that. That I see there. They did it really good in one spot and then they kind of.
Seems like when we return to this discussion of short term rentals, that's got to be a consideration. Do you isolate certain communities that you would not allow short term rentals in? And how do you decide which one of those neighborhoods would be that kind of a neighborhood? Or do you just say, no, it's, you know, property owners' rights, just give them the guidance on how to.
So this, we're not talking about Tamrec or Curry.
Not tonight.
To me, that would be a place that, are those apartments, are they owner?
It's going to be apartments. And then townhomes would be owner occupied.
See, to me, I would have those townhomes as not allow short term rents. Because otherwise they could get bought up by short term rents. And then we, then we would lose the
affordability.
Affordability, because it could happen that, those kind of places are the risk places. It's not the half a million dollar houses up. That's not the risk, especially here in Woodland Park.
There's a lot of higher end homes that have turned into rental properties. And I guarantee they're not owner occupied, that are being used as short term rentals for more than one family or more than one individual. I know a couple in my neighborhood.
Yeah, it, I mean, I've, I've been looking at it here. It's hard to cash flow here because it, that's why I'm going over there. Because I can get two hundred fifty dollars a night, which I get a hundred fifty dollars a night here.
It really surprised me because I'm talking about homes that are over seven hundred thousand and they're larger homes and have more space and enough bathrooms to support more than one individual.
Something I think we should encourage though is the, the, what's the term again for the studio above the garage? I think that's something we should encourage because, because it just gets more affordable beds in the town. Either for long term rental or short term rental, that's going to bring revenue in. But it didn't take a lot or a space or a house or anything away from anybody. It's just, it's a complete added, it's another bed or residence for shorter or long term rental.
Our, our.
And both those are good. Short term rentals are good because it brings revenue and long term.
Well, some HOAs do do discourage them, if not outright prohibit them. But I don't, Ken remembers how long ago we, we addressed ADUs, granny flats. And I, for some reason, I recall that they had to be owner occupied. I don't know if I.
They do.
They do.
Yeah, right. So either the primary residence or the ADU, the owner must live there. So that was the way to keep them as pure or in the mother in law unit kind of use.
Some cities even go to the point of saying how many you can have per block.
Yeah, that's what's delighted. Slid has one per block.
Oh, really?
The problem is when you get too many in the neighborhood and all of a sudden you got ten cars in the front yard parking garage.
Well, that's how I discovered the places in my neighborhood. Why do you have so many cars?
Four hundred thousand dollar house is doing the same thing. And it really, really messes up the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah, since two thousand fourteen, when the accessory dwelling unit standards came into play, we've, we've only issued maybe six or eight ADUs. Part of it is they're very difficult to retroactively include in your house for a complete kitchen and meet the building codes. Because you, they, the building code treats it like a duplex. And you have to have fire separation, heating and venting, separate, total separate systems. So that becomes hard to retroactively.
Yeah, you almost got to start and like build a garage and put it in. It'd be hard to retrofit.
Yes.
Get expensive.
And so some of the new builds that we have had, one or two that included a second kitchen from the ground up. So that was easier for them to do from, from start to end. As far as the units over the garage, our challenge there is that we have a height limitation of twenty feet for, for a accessory structure, a detached garage. So we had one that went in on Highland Street, but they had to go through the variance process to be able to get a taller unit. So one of the suggestions is that in order to make ADUs a little bit easier, that we write in the carriage house duh is allowed to go to twenty five feet or thirty feet. Right, if they're doing an ADU. So there are ways to try to enhance that. The other thing is that we eliminated any detached cottages as an ADU. And I go back and forth on that because in some places it would be nice to have a little cottage. But yet then you are getting into almost dual families for that.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't want.
Or.
I wouldn't want dual families on the property. But for a mother in law or a short term rental, because that's, you know, that's just going to bring revenue to the town, but it's not going to take away any existing. I think that's something we should consider.
It can also be perceived as a doubling the density in certain areas.
And then how do you deal with water taps?
Exactly.
Yeah, you gotta, so in BV, you have to buy another water tap.
For a short term or an ADU?
An ADU.
Okay.
Because that's what I'm building over there. I'm going to buy, I have to buy two water taps.
We do not, we don't, we did not, no, add the requirement for another water tap.
See, and I, and I wouldn't because, because what I've learned is the, with our short term rental over there is they really treat it like a hotel.
You just get the water running.
They sleep there and that's about it. They never use the, you've got a full kitchen, they never use it. Because they just sleep there. They, it's still kind of their vacation. So they go out to eat, they, they go out and have breakfast somewhere and they have lunch. Typically over there, there, it's a lot of hikers. And so, you know, they, they have breakfast and, and a restaurant and supper at a restaurant. During the day, they're out and about having fun because they're in the mountains. They're not going to be inside a place, the mountains. And all they do, all it is, is a place to sleep.
Well, we're taxing short. Where we're taxing short term rentals. Explain that. Where somebody puts in, I have apartments in an existing house. What do they be in tax then? They should be, because that's a commercial venture.
I wouldn't allow that.
It's not family.
No, you're changing its commercial basically, yeah. But that should be, wouldn't be, being zone residential, wouldn't that take care of that?
Well, I think you're describing borders, people who are boarding for a long term. So they don't pay the lodging tax. And our definition of a family, which is somewhat typical in other communities. You can have up to five unrelated people living in a single family home.
And that's, that's what I was talking about with these nicer homes or larger homes. It'd be five unrelated and I'm sure in a couple of cases, there might have been six, but it's a matter of enforcement, but. Um, you know, frankly, there, there are folks that have been attending the Bible college.
Yeah, that's what it is.
But it kind of destroys the similar, single family residential subdivisions is what it does. Cause those same people that don't stay there much have the parties on the weekends till three in the morning.
Yeah, and part of the problem also with the, the increase in short term rentals is the. Is the laws that are now skewed significantly to the renter versus the property owner of the long term rentals. And I, I've had a couple of long term rentals. I've got one that I've got a renter moving out and I'm selling it now and I'm out of long term rentals.
Because as, as inflation kicks in and all this stuff takes place, you can't blame them for doing that to try to figure out. Cause they can't afford to live and get a home.
And, and the owner can't afford to have, because you don't make much money on a long term rental. All you do is it's good basically, you're paid for. But, I mean, I had one where a year ago, a year and a half ago or so, when I sold that one. Somebody moved out and I had like thirty thousand dollars in damage on a property. I made five thousand dollars a year and I had to eat it. So, so the, the laws now are so skewed to the, the, the rentee versus the property. That there, you were, were so disincenting people to, to, to provide low term rental income. So it's better to take the property and make it a short term rental because it's big money. And oh, by the way, it never gets destroyed because they're only there three days. They can't do any damage in two days.
It's unique, it's not unique to us. Every, every place is that way. All cities are going through the same one.
Yeah.
This is takes place and that's, it's gonna take a while to figure out how to deal with it.
Yeah, there's a lot of people who still would rather long term rent because it's less work, but, but we've, we've made it so. So hard for the property owner now to make it viable and not lose money now on, on long term rentals. That's why they're, long term rentals are going away. Harder, harder to beat.
When you were talking though about, you know, folks maybe staying somewhere for thirty days, I saw it. Because I had a couple of nieces and nephews who did this because they didn't have to go to an office anymore during the pandemic. They would take their computer to a place they've always wanted to visit and stay there for thirty days and work from that, that location and then go on to another one. And I thought, well, that's, that's pretty cool. I wish I could have done that at some point in my life, but I think that is one of the. Customer bases for short term rentals. I don't know how long that'll last though.
Mine's in a condo over there and the person right next to me who owns that one, we know him really well. They're really good people. And that's how they set theirs up specifically for that. They've got an office built in. So it's a two bedroomer, but they're a second office. They said it was a one bedroom, the other one's an office. So people can just come and work. And, and there's, that's becoming a big thing is, is hey, let's just live all over the country and, you know, done working it. Especially in the West Coast, if your corporate headquarters in the East Coast is done at five, you come to the mountains, you're done at three o'clock. And when it's.
And paying less.
Yeah, you can go and do a bunch of hiking and all kinds of stuff.
So even the big high rise places are having times rent them out because everybody's working from home and doing different things.
Yeah, short term rentals to allow people just to work from anywhere is, is an increasing business as well, especially on the West Coast.
Cause a lot of people like to do that. I'm with their home.
Well, I'm glad our consultant's gonna help us understand a, a way ahead for us.
We're seeing that as camping too, because it's my wife and I, so we, we own our house here, but we're thinking. Why don't we just short term rent it during the summer and do a living in our camper? And make a whole bunch of money. So we took our camper out in the national forest and lived for a month just to try it out.
The secret is can you, can you get internet?
I found a place in the national forest. I'm not gonna tell anybody where it is. That you, that I can pull Zoom meetings and. I own the national forest, living for nothing. But it was great. We, my wife and I lived for a month out in the national forest. We're like, oh, we could absolutely do this.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
We're just killing time, guys. We're just sitting here talking, waiting for it's seven o'clock because we got done a half hour early. Maybe Sally.
No, I don't find, no, we're just talking about short term rentals.
Sally, could you kind of go through our planning meeting schedule for the rest of the year? Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Yeah.
What do you envision our meeting schedule being like?
Okay, so we will meet two weeks from tonight. That's October twenty eighth. And then our next regular meeting actually lands on Veterans Day. November eleventh. So we are going to have a special meeting the day before on November tenth. And that will be to hear the Tammerack Park, um, multifamily proposal. So that's gonna be a big meeting, uh, November tenth. It's a Wednesday evening. I hope you can all make that. And then the next regular meeting is actually Thanksgiving. So we will cancel that one.
Okay.
Okay. So, so we have next Thursday, November tenth. Uh, cancel Thanksgiving. And then in December, whatever the second Thursday is. Um, I think it's the ninth, um, December ninth will be our next meeting.
Okay.
So, and since we're talking about codes, um, the city attorney just sent me a new. Ordinance that amends our, um, family childcare homes. That the state, uh, adopted new regulations. That allow for childcare homes up to twelve children. To be a permitted use with no standards. Other than to receive a license from the state for a childcare facility. So, yeah, it's. It's, uh, really interesting how, um, you know, the state legislature recognized. That childcare is desperately needed. And so they're making it very simple and easy. For a childcare provider to do this out of their home. And we put in place maybe about fifteen years ago, ten years ago. Very specific standards about home child cares. And they did become somewhat controversial. Uh, we had a, a process that if. Um, there was aggrieved neighbors, they could ask for a hearing before the city council. We did a couple of those and during that time.
This, there's no standards.
This, there's no standard.
Standards, restroom standards, no.
Uh, well, they have to be licensed, so they meet the state licensing code. They'll, they'll expect it from fire and sanitation and play area and those sorts of things. But for example, we used to have a standard that you couldn't have toys all out in the front yard. They had to be. Behind the fence or something, um, just to preserve the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And, uh, yeah, so now we'll have to eliminate all those standards.
So now we can't, that will supersede.
The state law supersedes our codes. We have to come into compliance with them. So I'm thinking that's gonna be the December meeting for the, that to come forward.
Subdivision have covenants that say you can't do that?
You know, you can have covenants pretty much as long as you don't violate the Civil Rights Acts.
Yeah, but I'm sure state law would have more authority than covenants, isn't it?
They may, yes.
Pence has got the better attorney.
And what, what's really concerning about this is that you could do it in a multifamily situation too. So we didn't allow child cares in multifamily apartments or townhomes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we definitely don't, you would want somebody to rent an apartment, turn in your childcare and just have the cheap place for your childcare.
Well, you can imagine the noise above you, you know, with little.
Right.
Bicycles riding around and balls.
Right. So that's coming down the pike. Just got that today.
And again, you don't envision any meetings at the end of December.
No, that's Christmas. So holiday. So just the, the ninth, December ninth.
Free meetings until the end of the year.
So that's your last meeting the night?
Yes. Well, that's the recognition, the return.
There'll be a recognition before the consummate, January sixth for her. She's not telling a lot of people about that.
Sorry.
I'm just gonna put Sally Day.
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you what we're gonna do. We're gonna make a transition for session. You don't have to do anything, it's just over. So this is about close seven o'clock, we have to be. And we'll do an order and roll call. And, uh. At this point, I'll read the.
I'll take the roll.
All right, good.
Okay. Devoe.
Here.
Hartsfield.
Yeah.
Brown.
Here.
Bungie.
Here.
Karak.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
And Larson. We have a forum this evening and all current members present.
Do we have any, uh, we need to approve the minutes of September twenty three? Anybody have any corrections, uh, changes, comments? If not, we'll look for a motion.
A motion, I make a motion to approve the minutes of Septem, what is it, September twenty three? Or was it, I, yeah.
Mr. Bungie is trying to second.
Trying to second if I get my microphone down.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, public hearing number three. A FHDP twenty twenty one dash oh one and F day, FHDP twenty twenty one oh two. Consider a flood hazard development permit requested by David Maharis. I didn't solder that too bad. Okay. Uh, applicant, property owner to replant three single family home, family lots into two single family lots. And a track of Fountain Creek for land legally described as lots ten to twelve, block fourteen, Foster's Edition. One ten Chester Avenue in the urban residential U R zone.
You're on. No, you're up.
I'll have a brief presentation and then our property owner and applicant is here to answer any questions. Um, first of all, a flood hazard development permit is required to have a hearing before the planning commission. And that is the purpose for this evening. Uh, and the, I will start out with just a few definitions. Because the terminology that FEMA uses and the flood insurance. Um, met rate maps can get a little convoluted. Uh, so just want to remind all of you. That, uh, the flood plain, the one hundred year, or actually it's a one percent chance per year. That you can have a flood of this magnitude is known as the special flood hazard area. The floodway is the actual area that is mapped. That carries most of the flood water, but not all of it. The flood fringe is where it overtops the floodway. And so the flood plain usually has a running stream, not in Woodland Park though. Um, but there's usually a small stream bed, then a floodway and a flood fringe. To make up the entire special hazard flood area. So that's the basics for the FEMA maps. And then characteristics of the flood plain, what's very important is called the base flood elevation. And this dotted line is basically the top of the, the water. When you have a hundred year storm. So the base flood elevation becomes a key component. In the analysis of how buildings are set in the flood fringe. Because they must be built at least one foot above the base flood elevation. So, and David Maharis can correct me if I make a mistake here. He, he's a drainage expert. Um, so if you were to change the floodway. If a private property owner wants to make, um, an adjustment in that floodway. Then you're jumping through all kinds of hoops with FEMA. And the first thing you end up doing is what's called a conditional letter of map revision. And a CLOMAR is a detailed drainage study. That shows that when you're moving the floodway, you're not going to flood. Or people downstream or beside you. And FEMA applies all kinds of standards to that CLOMAR before you build. And then they give you the green light to go ahead and, um, approve your CLOMAR. And you can build and move the floodway. And I, I'll just say Walmart did all of this. When they came in and slightly adjusted Fountain Creek. After you build, then you do what's called a letter of map revision, a LOMAR. And the letter of map revision then changes the map itself. And they certify that you have built according to your CLOMAR. So I know that's more than probably what you wanted to know, but it gets. We're not in a situation with this flood hazard permit to do CLOMAR, LOMARS. But it will come up in the future because we do have a property owner looking at that right now. For property that is over by Gateway Elementary School. So just wanted to give you that background. So, um, want to show you the aerial of the area that we're talking about. Which is on Chester Avenue and Fairview. There are three lots in Foster's Edition, lot ten, eleven and twelve. That were platted back in the eighteen nineties. And Fountain Creek cuts through this entire block. And back in nineteen ninety nine, the city, um. Had a bond issue to do the improvements along Fountain Creek through this channel. And on either ends of it, the orange slash lines is the floodway. And this floodway has base flood elevations already determined. So at eighty, eighty four, um, oh three is the elevation of this base flood elevation. And then the flood fringe area shows up in blue. And the five hundred year flood shows up in this yellow gold area. The five hundred year flood is not regulated. It's only the hundred year storm, but they map it.
So the hundred Sally is the blue?
The hundred and the orange slashes. The hundred and the orange slashes
Okay.
is the blue.
So the lots we're we're talking about today, that's the orange slashes is the hundred-year.
That's correct. So the area that we're looking at today is all within the floodway.
Gotcha.
And what Mr. Maharis wants to do is to build two homes on either side of this floodway. And our code says that a flood hazard permit may be required for adjacent construction. So that's why we're going through this. And here is what Mr. Maharis is going to come in with at the next meeting is a replat of these three old lots into two lots and a tract. Tract A will be the regulatory floodway. And you can see that riprap has been, is shown on this map. And this channel is very stable. It functions very well. And the intent is to convey this channel to the city so that the city can oversee and regulate those regional stormwater channels. And the two lots on either side do meet the city's minimum square footage. In the urban residential zone, you're required to have seventy-five hundred square feet as a minimum, and these are over almost eighty-four hundred square feet. And what's important to note is that tract A will contain the regulated floodway. So Lot one and Lot two will not have a portion of the hundred-year. It will
All outside the hundred-year.
Yes, it will on Lot two have a portion of the five-hundred-year, but again, that's not regulated. So here is a photo looking north from Chester Avenue. And you can see the the channel and the riprap and the vegetation. And all the, this is called grouted riprap down in here before it gets into the culvert. And then this culvert carries the hundred-year storm all the way down to Cavalier Park. It's about a block and a half from here. And these improvements were done in nineteen ninety-nine when the city established the stormwater fees and was able to bond for these improvements. There is an existing easement right now through here. But this will clean up the old plat once it's replatted.
Do we know Sally, if since this has been put in, has the water ever backed up in the culvert and run over the road?
It has never overflowed, so it has functioned very, very well. Yep.
Two thousand and fourteen, there was no issue with it?
Nope, nope, this section of the channel just works really, really well. And the homes will be three feet, their main level will be three feet above the base flood elevation. Get that right.
And Sally, is there any issue with the location of houses on these lots? Assume the one, the lot two is a Fairview frontage, it needs twenty-five-foot frontage, twenty-five-foot in the back. Is there, is, are we generating something that in practice, the owner is gonna be at the, looking for variance right after we approve this, or is it, or is this fit comfortably?
So Lot one, you can see the outline of the house. That will meet the setbacks comfortably for side, front, rear and back. Lot two has a very small portion that will need a variance.
That's what I was looking at, is that? How do we generate a lot if we know it needs a variance in the first place? How do we agree to these limits like this?
Well, we can agree to the limits because he may decide to modify the home. But it's very typical for these older subdivisions to need a variance, setback variance on a corner lot. So and Fairview Street is actually sixty-foot road wide, right away. So this house will be am- very far setback off the asphalt.
Oh, so it's not twenty-five, it's sixty?
The road right away is sixty. This right here is the edge of the pavement.
Hey, Sally, does the responsibility of the city change at all as owner of the floodway compared to simply a city where a private property owner owns the floodway?
Yes, I mean
I thought that was the answer. I'm not sure I could readily articulate the difference, but maybe you can.
Well, a private property owner with a floodway of this nature carries quite a bit of burden on their shoulders. Whereas the municipal government is equipped and skilled to be able to handle drainage improvements, so.
It's shifting responsibility from where the, where the, where the city could go from totally, you know, ignoring it to some greater activity or concern or maintenance or further capital improvements. The city is now upfront, gonna supposed to be doing, you know, capital improvements is maybe required from time to time and the best level of maintenance and such where it might or might not have had to do that otherwise. Is that fair?
Also ask you to look at that. Tract A includes practically all public improvements. So rightfully so, it should be under the ownership of the city.
Well, ma- maybe, but I would say the city twenty, city twenty-two years ago apparently went, I'm not sure how the city did, just lots of improvements on private property without ever addressing this, but apparently it did.
It was the private, it has an easement for the public benefit of the drainage. And maybe David Maharis can enlighten us even more, but it you know, the the municipal government's primary role is health, safety and welfare. And floodways should be managed by the municipal government in order to protect the citizens.
How about the line that's drawn along the the back of the, for the back of Lot two? Is it right at the edge of the riprap or something? I'm just wondering, is, one presumably could draw the line a little, you know, you know, could draw the line in slightly different spots, some of which would reduce the need for a potential variance to construct on Lot two and some of which would increase the need. Is there some choices that were made here that we should be aware of as to exactly how the line is drawn compared to the edge of the riprap?
I'll let the applicant talk about his rationale for these lot lines.
Are we getting to the point?
Yeah, we are kind of getting into next meeting's discussion on the
Perhaps, perhaps.
What I mean is, are you at the point to have the applicant do his presentation?
How about if I go through the rest of the PowerPoint and then we can come back to Lee's question? So there are a number of standards in Title twenty for flood hazard reduction. And the general standards deal with anchoring, construction materials, methods, utilities, subdivision and development. And these homes, again, are outside the flood fringe and the floodway. So really, these standards do not apply directly to these two new homes. But the applicant is providing for good foundation work. And utilities will be put in place so they're waterproof. And then we can talk about the subdivision further. Specific standards, whoops. Residential construction, again, they're not applicable since it's not in the floodplain. Nor are there any openings in the foundation walls that need to be added since they're not in the floodplain. The erosion control and landscaping will be submitted as part of each home and their single-family application zoning development permits. The floodway does not encroach onto these homes lots. So that complies. And then the adjacent areas need not comply with these standards. Minimizing flood damage. The applicant has proposed that the homes be built three feet above the base flood elevation. And this process will certify that. The last step is once the homes are built, then the engineer must certify the flood hazard permit that it was built according to plans. And all the appropriate permits and drainage will take place as well. This application was published in the newspaper. Letters were sent out to the adjoining property owners. A poster was installed at the sign. The flood manager, that's me, reviewed the application and drafted the app, the staff report. And then city departments, public works, utilities took a look at it as well as fire and the dry utilities, no concerns.
So just, just a quick question. As I recall reading it, I thought it said, comments from the various utility were incorporated. Was that, what, what were those comments? What were the suggestions by the various utilities that needed to be addressed?
Most of them said no comment.
Okay, well, I, I, I may, I may have, maybe I've forgotten. I thought, thought it indicated that they were, there had been some, right?
Yeah, there was nothing specific, no So the staff recommendation is to approve the two flood hazard permits to construct two single-family residential dwellings adjacent to the Fountain Creek Special Flood Hazard Area with five conditions. The first condition is that prior to land disturbance, submit for approval for the entire site. The minor final plat, which has been submitted and will be heard next meeting for all of you and then November eighteenth for city council. There will be zoning development permits submitted for each of the homes that details the location of the service lines, final landscaping, grading and erosion control. We're also encouraging no impact to the Fountain Creek floodway regarding grading, landscaping, fill or other disturbances. They will be required to meet all building codes and city standards with and minimize exposure to any flood damage. Encourage the owners of these properties to purchase flood insurance. But it's not a requirement. And then lastly, is the certification of these homes being built at a certain elevation. So with that, our questions at the end, so we can bring the applicant up.
So what we'll do now is we'll have the applicant's presentation. And then after he is completed, we'll have the planning commission ask any questions of staff and the applicant. So you're up.
Good evening, I'm David Miharis with, I'm the applicant, the owner and the engineer on this project. So really, you know, these are properties that the city took the initiative to do the improvements, you know, in the date that Sally stated. They got the easement for those. My assumption is, Sally, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, that easement includes the access and the maintenance and the responsibility for those improvements in the current easement. So providing those in a tract should not affect, you know, the city's responsibility to maintain their own improvements. The other aspect, you know, it's kind of a quirk of FEMA code that it's typically a requirement that the localized floodplain administrator not allow small lots under an acre and a half to develop with floodplain on it, to plat those lots. So it's kind of cleaning up that aspect of our floodplain development. The houses are set, you know, the floodplain at the rear of the houses, which would be the high point of the string, is it a, it's something oh two, I've set the top of foundation at an oh three. And so the finished floor would be a foot above that. Woodland Parks Code's kind of a quirk where you look for top of foundation versus, or you look for finished floor versus top of foundation, which is where I usually set floodplain elevations. So we're exceeding the code requirement by an additional foot. Many questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Has tract A already been transferred to the city?
No.
When will that occur?
That will occur upon recording the plat, once the city council approves it on November eighteenth.
The action we take tonight does not need to go to the city council. And then this is really not relevant to this application, but for the north of this tract of land, is that still privately on the Fountain Creek section above it?
Yes, it is. There is an alley in this portion, so it goes actually twenty more feet north that the city owns and then it is private property.
What else? One thing I'll say, you, you've been here before. And if, I'm not talking about this property, but in that same general neighborhood, you've built a number of homes. I was here when that took place. And let me tell you, you did nothing but improve that neighborhood. Does he look good?
I think you're talking about the Christians homes on Willow Street, but
No, on Chester.
He has three homes.
But you've done something in that.
As a civil engineer, I've been here before, but this is my first development.
Well, if you design those, they will. Okay, we don't have any other questions.
Well, Mr. Brown had some questions about the placement of the property lines in relationships to the floodplain improvements.
Correct, and that property line was located to be, so that it could contain the entirety of the hundred-year floodplain where the flood fringe is, as Sally's been stating.
So pretty much reflects one of the fringes.
That line pretty much with a little bit of excess to spare.
Lee, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, can I ask the developer if he anticipates seeking a variance for either, either Lot one or Lot two in order to place the house?
Yeah, we are proposing to seek a variance for Lot two. There will be no variance for Lot one. And I, I think we're, we're encroaching in that area by about five feet, if I remember correctly. With, you know, the twenty-five-foot, you know, double frontage that we have on that lot. And then there's also another approximately twenty feet to the edge of pavement current.
All right, I guess that's not really the issue for today. I think I'm gonna have the question in two weeks from now about us proposing a lot with an anticipated variance in the first place. Trying to decide if, if the the house size can be adjusted, its placement can be adjusted, or the lot lines of the of exactly where the floodway lot line goes would be, would be placed. Because I'm not very happy about us approving lots when a variance is anticipated from the get-go.
I agree with Lee's comments. I had an opportunity to sit on the board of adjustment. And one of the things that we always looked at when we ran, granted variances was this created, was this request for a variance created by the applicant? In this case, you're asking, not in this application, but certainly with the In this case, you're asking, not in this application, but certainly with the, the, with the plat.
Not with the plat.
Well, you're right. The plat meets the requirements of the plat. But the, the size of the house will dictate where that house will be, can locate within that lot.
Well, understood. So, so first, in the floodplain development permit, there, there's that aspect. But I think in a, we'd be at the ZDP level when we look for that variance, so.
Yes.
Well, again, I would just encourage you to redesign, downsize the, the structure on this, this lot to be able to meet city requirements.
They'll get the adjustment at the site.
Okay. And I would encourage that, or perhaps if it's not too late to look at exactly where the lot line along the floodway goes too. I'm not sure, how close you're getting to exactly the floodway is a room to move that line a couple of feet to reduce your need for variance.
There's little room, but again, I, I will, I will get in and see what I can do to adjust.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are the buildings on lot one and two basically mirror images of each other?
They are, yes.
My lines aren't very square.
Anybody else? If not, we'll open. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? We do not. Anybody come here that forgot to sign up that wants to say anything? You're more than welcome to do that at this point. At this point, we'll close the public comment. Okay, and I don't think there's a need for rebuttal unless you want to. I think everything's covered. Okay, and commissioners at this point, can I ask any final questions? Okay. Now we can begin deliberation. Questions based on the evidence finding? And if you don't, then somebody needs to make a motion in a second. And if you don't, you want to talk some more, then talk some more. So I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion.
To approve.
To approve, yeah.
Do we have a second?
As written in the staff report. Okay.
So this is part of clarification, that movement includes recommendations by staff.
Five conditions.
Yes.
In other words, what you're asking.
Well, you made a motion to approve and staff has made a number of recommendations to include. And usually the motion will include those recommendations. I just wanted to know if you.
Make a motion to approve with the recommendation.
Thank you.
We know Al likes to be brief and to the point.
Yes.
Completed number eleven, any further discussions or opinions on the motion? Thank you. Okay, we need to vote.
Okay, I'll start with Hartsfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Bungie.
Yes.
Carrick.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
And Devoe.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
We'll see you again in a couple of weeks. That whole area is slowly getting better going down that area. Remember when before all departments went down there off the one street? You could drive a semi down that, that, that creek that was there by the mobile home park. You could literally drive a semi down there. It would wash out a little kid's probably mile. And that's all been repaired. It's all been done and that whole area coming down Fairview. And that area looks so much better than it did ten, fifteen years ago. And this just is continuing to do that and that. Guys, if you want, anyways, we'll move on to our reports.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have some reports?
Uh, other than the monthly report, I did want to share with all of you that by the end of September, third quarter, we have done almost twenty-two million dollars worth of construction or zoning development permits. And three hundred and two ZDPs altogether for the first nine months of the year, three more months to go. And things are still rolling in hot and heavy. So with, it's been very busy. And we're thrilled that we're coming to the end of the comp plan and getting into the code review. So a lot is going on right now between Dave and I.
I think for what's been going on with pandemic and our economy, our community is doing pretty well. We've got a lot of growth going on. We've got businesses coming in the area in spite of all that. That's, shows a testament that buildings, cities going the right way. Do that. So at this point in time, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
One more question for Sally. And I missed, you, but you already said it, I just. When is the city council's public hearing on the comp plan?
It will be November ninth, eighteenth or nineteenth.
Okay.
That second Thursday.
And would you like us there?
It would be wonderful if you could be there. Yes.
Will you bring a cookie?
Might bring champagne.
I'm done, John.
I'm still looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Hey Sally. Just the timer, Mark, is that, I can't tell from this little picture, is that between six?